6:30, so we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all for joining us for our school board candidate forum hosted by Sparta High Point Charter School. I would like to thank all of our candidates for attending this evening. Each of you will be given 90 seconds to share your opening statement, including your background, your reason for running, your personal goals if you're elected, and any other information you feel is important to share with our audience. We do have a few ground rules before we begin. I ask that while each person is speaking, that other candidates and the audience do remain quiet. We are in a bit of a tight schedule tonight, so we also ask that you hold all applause and reaction. We have about two hours and 119 minutes of scheduled time. So, candidates, please end your replies when your time has expired. Miles will be sitting down here where you see the blue chair and the bottle of water and the desk. And they will have cards that say 10 seconds and then cards that say "time's up." So you'll know when your 90 seconds or 60 seconds is complete. You do not have to use your entire time, however, if you don't use your time, you may not give it to another candidate. Please address only the moderators, not other candidates nor the audience. Any and all moderating decisions, should the need arise, will be made by me. I'm Dr. Wendy Burnett. By the way, I'm the principal of High Point Charter School. And next to me, I have Heidi Prestwood, Executive Director of the Sparta Chamber of Commerce. Finally, if you would, you do all have the questions in front of you for this evening, but if you would like our moderators, you want to go ahead and introduce yourselves?
Sophia Robertson.
Ally Solberg.
If you would like them to repeat the question, you can go ahead and ask, okay? All right. So we will start in, we'll have you give your opening statements in ballot order. So that begins with Mr. Anthony Schulze.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the High Point students for doing this. Good evening. My name's Anthony Schulze. To start off, I just want to talk a little bit about myself. Sparta's been my home for the last 37 years. I met my wife Abby right out on these front steps out here at her first freshman high school dance. And we've been together ever since. I graduated from UW-Lacrosse with a bachelor's degree in environmental sciences and geography, and a minor in earth science, and purchased my father-in-law's safety and compliance company back in 2013. Abby and I raise our five daughters here in Sparta where they participate in all of our clubs and sports within the school district. Fast forward to the last four months, having been on the Board of Education here, I think we all can agree that Mr. Hendricks and myself took board seats at a very volatile time in the district's history. Pandemic brought with it many hot topics that the district had to face head-on. From the beginning, my goal was to find ways to bridge the gap between the district and our greater community. I did this by listening, observing, and processing information from all sides before making any type of board decision. But this commitment goes beyond one or two pressing decisions today, tomorrow, and in our very near future. This commitment is to continue enhancing our district for many years to come so we can stay competitive with our surrounding school districts. I'll do this by continuing to fight for each and every student and staff member in this district, and I will do it because Sparta is our home. Thank you.
Mrs. Leveridge.
Hello, I'm Marlo Leveridge. My husband Jim and I live on our family farm, and we've raised four children who have gone through the Sparta school system. A little background on me, I have a business degree and a master's degree in education. I taught English and math at Sparta Middle School for 16 years, and since then, I've stayed active by subbing both here in the Sparta School District and in surrounding school districts. And I've seen what's happening in other school districts, and I see what's happening in ours, and that's why I'm running. I see that our school system needs a reset. According to DPI, 71% of our students are performing at basic or below-basic levels in English language arts, and math is worse, at 77% below proficient. This is unacceptable. Our community and our kids deserve better. The quality and rigor of our curriculum and teacher retention is being sacrificed by current policies. We are continually losing students and teachers, which puts an economic and educational strain on our district. We need a board who will listen to parents and teachers and focus on the fundamentals of math and reading and writing and science. Setting higher expectations for behavior and academics will help to improve our student achievement. I would like to hold the administration accountable and not give in to the status quo, and I believe Sparta can do better. Thank you.
Mr. Hendricks.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the High Point School for hosting this and giving us a very important opportunity to express our concerns and our candidacy publicly. I'm a candidate because I care deeply about the schools in Sparta. I care about the students, I care about the teachers, the staff, and I care about our good programs. And I'm proud of the many good programs that we have here in Sparta, from the excellent early learning school that we have, the excellent special education programs, the ESL programs, all of the good things that are going on in our classrooms. And I want to see those continue. I believe that, well, I'm running because I believe it's important that school board members are willing and able to work cooperatively with the other six board members to make the best decisions possible for our students. And I do not want to give up my board seat to any board candidate who would use it to tear down the good things that are going on within our district. There are those who do not seem to appreciate the excellent work that's going on with our instructional leaders, with our facilities and staff, and especially the excellent work that's being done with fiscal management. We need individuals, and my concern is that if we elect four board members, they will have a majority...
Time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Mrs. Maureen.
Good evening. I'm a little bit different. I actually just moved here three years ago, so I taught for 10 years back in Arizona, and then I got called to active duty. I have 35 years, almost 35 years in the military. And so at that point, my children moved with me to just outside of St. Louis. And we lived in a small town with a cornfield in the backyard and had a great school and a great neighborhood, and we loved it. So we really, really love the Midwest and just how amazing the people are here. And so after that, went over to Africa for a year when I deployed and I left my husband and the kids back home in Mascota, Illinois. And then we moved to Huntsville, Alabama, and then back to, then to Korea, back to Arizona, and now on to Sparta, Wisconsin. And so we love it. We live just south of Cataract, up there in Little Falls. And my husband says he's not moving ever again, so we're here for the long haul. My kids are fifth grade and eighth grade right now, and I have been highly impressed by everything that has, that I've encountered with the school district as it is right now. Like I said, I came from a school where I taught for so long. Anyway, so the reason I'm running is so that we can provide all students with a world-class education so that they have the necessary tools to be responsible citizens and contributing members.
Time's up. Mrs. Lopez.
Good evening. I'm Amy Lopez, and I want to start by thanking all who have a part in tonight's activities: Dr. Wendy Burnett, Heidi Prestwood, the Technology Department, the community members who committed, who contributed questions, and especially the students of High Point Charter School for compiling these questions and hosting this forum tonight. I also want to thank the other candidates for being here. I know Jason Perry would be here if he could. And for those who are in attendance in the audience and online. I also want to say thank you to my family who are not here tonight because my sons are participating in a NASP archery tournament for state. A little bit about me, my husband Stephen and I have been Sparta residents for 18 years. We're owners of a local business, members of St. Patrick Parish, parents of eight children, four who are Sparta High School graduates, and one is a current senior. After spending considerable time attending board meetings, preparing public input on numerous topics, and writing letters to the board, often without receiving any response, it became obvious to me that we need a representative on the board who is willing to listen and respond to the needs of the community and the district. Deciding that I was that person took a little bit of convincing from some wonderful people in the community to whom I am grateful for encouraging me to be the voice that is needed. Nearly every issue in the district, I think...
Time's up, ma'am.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Wells.
Yeah, hello. My name's Todd Wells, and I'm a new homeowner of the district. I recently graduated from Sparta High School, class of 2019, in the top 5% of my class. And I also just graduated from Western Technical College with a 4.0 on the Business Management Program. I am a, I am not, excuse me, I am a... Sorry about that. I am not just a... I am a recent product of our education, and I think that would make me a unique experience, a unique position on the board. Along, when I, when I was in high school, I recently took a government class. And we use logic, reasoning, and research to develop convenient thoughts, unique experience, and develop unique experiences while encouraging discussion throughout the class. That's where I received this pocket constitution and, and from a, from a great educator of mine. And she encouraged me to run for local politics and throughout the discussions that we've had. And that's when I truly learned that our educators not just teach the morals and values, but also shape our students well. And that's why I'm disappointed with the turnover rate in our district, and that's why I'm running.
Mr. McKenna.
At McKenna, who I am, what I am, my goals, my vision for the district, and why a roomful of people should vote for me instead of seven other qualified candidates in 90 seconds. It's not possible, so I'll just state the obvious. I'm from Sparta. I love Sparta. I want Sparta to be the best Sparta that it can be. This district, this school system is the face of our community. I want our face to represent us. I want people from surrounding towns to see the Spartan head and know that our community did everything possible, worked tirelessly, and dedicated all of our talents to make the Sparta area school district a destination school district. I want them to... I want other districts in the state and country are looking for a model to define success. I want them to look at Sparta. We have everything that we need to do it right here. We have budget. We have talent. We have a staff that is willing to go above and beyond. And we have a community dying to jump in and support. We just need to figure out how to put the pieces together. Thank you.
Okay, I will turn this over to our moderators, and we'll begin with the questions.
Our first question is for Mr. Schulz. Schulze, sorry. What do you see in the school board's role in supporting the student, staff, teachers, and administration in the Sparta area school district? How involved should the board be in day-to-day operations?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Ms. Robertson. Good question. So for me, again, as a board member, the number-one goal is to be informed, right? I feel as a board member, everybody handles it a little bit differently. I like to really be able to stay up to date on the topics and make a strong, confident decision. So I meet and talk with my administrators, my directors on a very regular basis, not to lead, but to help guide, because we have amazing leaders already in our district. And if I can just be a part of that process, then I feel like I'm doing my job. So as a board member, you're gonna, we're gonna be as involved as we want to be and choose to be. But it's about guiding, and I think that makes you a natural leader when you can guide well, so. Thank you.
Mrs. Leveridge, you're next.
Okay, a board represents the public. You are voting for us to represent you. And so I think the first thing that a board member has to do is has to be open to public comment, open to public concerns, to be able to listen to your voices and what you want for your school. In addition, the board is also running the administration. They're the ones that are setting policy. They're the ones that are making sure that the administration follows through with those policies, and those policies are in tune with everything that's going on in our community and in the schools, making sure that curriculum is solid and that teachers and principals are supported. And it's up to the board to make sure that the schools are running well and they're fiscally responsible. Part of the, part of the reason for being on the board is also to research what's going on and what you're going to be voting on at every board meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Hendricks, you're next.
Thank you. I believe the board's role in supporting students, staff, teachers, and administration is really based in making sure that the board stays within its lane. And what I mean by that, we need to work together to set a vision, to set direction for the district, to set policy that ensures that vision and direction, and to make sure that policy is being followed. The board needs to oversee spending, hold leadership accountable, all with the goal of establishing the best teaching and learning environment possible in our schools. The question goes on to say involvement in day-to-day operations. Board members only have authority during board members, during board meetings, and so should not really be involved in the day-to-day operations. That's the, the job of our administration, and it's our job to make sure they do their job.
Time's up.
Mrs. Maureen, you're next.
Okay, so I see the board's role is in establishing goals to support the students and the betterment of teachers and the betterment of administration to provide the support needed to be able to make everybody's job more, not only better, but more enjoyable so that we don't lose teachers and we're helping them to be successful. I also believe that we are, our role is to set policy. So, but just like Mr. Schulze said, we need to listen, and before we set policy, we're listening and making the decisions with valid information and valid points. So we also oversee the resources and that, you know, it'll depend on whether or not the operating referendum comes up, if it's going to be a hard job or a little bit easier. And we oversee the curriculum to ensure that the students are meeting the state standards.
Time's up.
Mrs. Lopez, you're next. So I think that the way that the school board assists and encourages the teachers, the staff, the students, and the administration is by doing their job well. And in order to do their job well, they have to drop policies that support the district in facilitating the education of our students while representing the values and needs of the community, to set an annual budget using state, federal, and local funds, understanding that every dollar we spend ultimately comes from our constituents to some degree, and ensuring that those funds provide the support that the teachers need. We are to provide high-quality curriculum, to develop a good relationship with the superintendent based on mutual respect and trust, and to do, or, but we are not elected, as others have said, to run the day-to-day operations of the district. We are elected to represent the community as a whole. Thank you. Mr. Wells, you're next.
Yes, so the board's absolutely responsible for supporting the student, staff, teachers, administration. But more specifically, we need to create a greater focus on supporting our educators and staff. Turnover has been significantly high over recent times. I know that only one English teacher at the high school remains since I've graduated there. And those are the individuals that in turn create the end product, the well-educated students that we need. And this, that's, that's our end goal, is to provide the best high-quality education for all our students. In terms of administration, those, those individuals are the experts. We need to listen to them in our two, after we set the vision, we need to listen to them and how they could set forth that vision because those individuals are going to be the ones that push us forward.
Mr. McKenna, you're next.
A board's role is to set policy and work with the administration to guide the overall direction of the district, not to micromanage staff. Leaders need to hire good people, put them in places that allow them to be successful, train them, and then stand back and let them do their job. Board members tinkering with the day-to-day operations in our school district will hinder our success because they are not experts. Our staff are. That said, if I were elected to the Board of Education, seeing me in one of our schools wouldn't be an odd thing. I would want to see how decisions made in a meeting are affecting everyday life on our rooftops and look for opportunities that possibly our board could improve them.
Mrs. Leveridge, do you support the operating referendum? If the operating referendum does not pass on April 5th, SASD will have to cut 2.8 million from its budget. If you alone were in charge of those cuts, where would you make them, including extracurriculars, if any?
For that question, at this point, I am not supporting the referendum. I have done a lot of research, and I've asked a lot of questions regarding the business, from the business office regarding the cost per pupil per school. I have not gotten any information back from that. I just feel like we don't have enough information to be able to support that amount of money for this community. Out of a $40 million budget, 2.1 million is about 5% of the budget. So 5%, I believe, is something that we can try to find. We can ask the board, the administration, to find excess funds. I'm sure that there are ways that in different entities, in different schools, the principals can make recommendations, since they are on the forefront and they are on the ground floor. They know where, where there can be cuts made and where we can cut out. I think administration is probably the first thing and not teachers and staff. Thank you.
Mr. Hendricks.
I support the referendum 100%. If it doesn't pass, we will have to make some drastic cuts. And if, if I alone was responsible for those cuts, I would choose a mix of, of true reductions versus those reductions which are only going to delay the problem for a couple of years, and I'll give you some examples. We could defer capital improvement projects and save money in the next two years. But two years down the line, we will still have a deficit, and we will have a pile of deferred capital improvement projects. We've already worked to reduce insurance costs. We would have to delay technic, technology replacements. Yes, we would need to look at Cataract School. And one other thing I would say, yes, 2.8 million dollars may represent about 5% of the budget, but we spend less than 5% of the budget on facilities annually. If we were going to cut 5%, it would be the total facilities budget.
Mrs. Maureen.
I will support the operating referendum. If you look at just the history of it, the operating, the operating of the schools has not kept up with inflation. The cap has not kept up with inflation since 1993. So if you look at it in your own household, and, and yes, we're all talking about tightening the budget and doing all of that, but put it in perspective, we all didn't know that there would be $5 gas this year, and we didn't know that the food costs would at least go up by one-third. So if last year we budgeted for the cost of food and fuel back then, and we kept a certain amount that we were going to pay on our house payment, is it, do we just not buy gas now so that we can still pay on our house payment? And is that really the wisest thing, use of your money? So maybe you don't go to work three days a week? I don't, I, so that's, that's definitely why I absolutely support the operating referendum at this point.
Mrs. Lopez. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards, well, my answer is no, I do not support the referendum at this time. The Wisconsin Area Association of School Boards website states that the state legislature sets the revenue limit with the intent to protect the taxpayer from overpaying property taxes related to education, especially true in low-revenue districts like Sparta. Due to the budgeting formula, essentially, we are being overtaxed. It's not that the community has not been generous with the district. It has been. And it is the, it is the district that has not been transparent enough in expressing to the community how their tax dollars are being collected and for what purpose. At this time, I think the community needs to focus on return and, on investment. Sure, we have a state-of-the-art facility, but what about our most important investments, our kids? How have they benefited from all our efforts with 30% to 40% literacy rates and being in the bottom 15% of the districts in our state? It's time to rip the Band-Aid off the budget, let the light shine in, and the air clear. Is it time up? Okay, thank you, sorry. Mr. Wells.
Yes, so I do support the 2.8 million dollar referendum and simply because it just offers plenty of opportunities for the district, specifically because a majority of our funding from the state comes from how much we spend yearly. And it would be foolish not to take advantage of the opportunities that we have, especially because if we weren't to cover this money throughout the referendum, we would end up suffering on the other end in the long haul. Our mill rate could potentially double in the case just to cover our, just to get back to the $40 million. And even though it might be a 5% cut, we have to understand that even businesses have profit margins of about 1%. 5% is just too drastic when we're focusing on our kids.
Mr. McKenna.
Money doesn't equal success. If you gave two people each $100 to go grocery shopping for the week, my wife would be eating seven course meals. I'd probably run out of Ho-Hos on Tuesday. I can't cook. It all depends on individual talents and dedication to a task. If the referendum passes, it does not guarantee success. If it fails, it does not guarantee failure. What we do with what we have is the key. Last year's World Series, the Braves with the number 11 payroll in baseball beat the Astros, who were number five. The Dodgers, with a $266 million payroll, were sitting home watching. In sports, small-market teams have always had to focus on things that the spenders don't: scouting, developing talent, retention, culture. That sounds like Sparta. We're the underdog. If we try to be like Onalaska, we'll lose Toonalaska.
Mr. Schulze.
Thank you. I'm absolutely in support of this referendum. To not support this referendum is a, is a glaring statement that you do not understand what the referendum is about. This referendum is not asking for more money. We are asking to move from one bucket to another bucket. The money is there. We have one of the smartest, most fiscally responsible directors of finance in the state of Wisconsin. You could ask anybody in the WASB. What we need to do is we need to ask permission to move money from debt reduction into operating. The money's there. If the referendum fails, the money's still there. It's just sitting in this account, and we can't use it, and we have to make reductions, reductions that are completely unnecessary because we have the money already. We need your permission as a community to be able to transfer that into our checking account or our operating bucket. Thanks.
Mr. Hendricks, this next question is for you. What is your definition of student's achievement, and how would you work with the school community to improve it?
Thank you. You know, much of the reference to student achievement tonight has been based on the DPI's report card and the state assessments. DPI's report card and the state assessments. It's been shown that the state assessments are biased against communities that have a high level of socioeconomic, um, low socioeconomic students. It's been shown that those tests are unfair to students who have special needs, and those tests mean nothing to the students. They do not affect their grade, they do not affect their ability to move from one grade to the next. I think we need to establish a much better measure of student achievement, something that matters to our community. And there are plenty of options. We could be looking at post-secondary enrollment, we could look at post, at advanced placement success, we could look at our own measures of academic progress, what we call MAPS, we could be looking at percentage of students who are reading at grade level.
Time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Maureen, you're, you're next.
I agree. I don't think, I think we do focus a lot on standardized chess, testing, and that kind of developed during the No Child Left Behind era. And so we've gone to where we're really focused on language art, and we're pushing our teachers' language arts, reading, math, language arts, reading, math. We're not teaching the social studies, we're not teaching the art, we're not giving them time to be able to decide which state, like which state standard is more important? Is the math state standard more important or, or is, is, so there's no really analytical thinking, that's not important to us anymore? We really just want to, want to focus on reading, writing, and math. So I don't believe that that's the best way to, to evaluate our students. And there's a lot of time that could be used in the classroom that's now being used for standardized teaching.
Mrs. Lopez, you're next.
There has been a lot of discussion about the DPI scorecard, the MAPS testing that students take regularly, and other standardized tests. While these objective numbers are important to consider, they don't fully represent, nor are they the only way to gauge students' progress or achievement. Much of a student's actual growth and progress are subjective, things that may not be reflected on a test. In order for these real and substantial wins to be noted and celebrated, we need to have a collaboration and communication between the school and the parents. In order to impact student achievement, would, what would it be like if we had classrooms where we identified students' learning styles when they're young, and we matched them with other students and teachers that learn in the same way? How exciting would it be to have a classroom full of kinesthetic learners or a classroom of auditory learners? One thing we know is that students are different and have different needs and require different devices and strategies to succeed.
Mr. Wells, you're next.
So I don't really think the question should be really about student achievement, but rather on growth. I have two brothers that are in the autism spectrum disorder, and one of them just learned in school how to fold towels. And I really think that we should go above and beyond in terms of growth, because even though once when we hit those benchmarks and even proficiency standards, we should still be encouraging our students to learn continuously. It shouldn't, it just shouldn't be ignored. I know that with our community and a low socioeconomic status, as mentioned with our DPI scores, we do get more benefit towards growth. However, there's still a measure of achievement there, and we have to understand that our students are growing and will continue to grow as we teach them.
Mr. McKenna, you're next.
Throughout this campaign, I've pointed out our DPI scores multiple times. I haven't done that to highlight a failure, but to trigger a conversation. Normally, the reaction I get is, how? But no one has asked me what I see as the most important question. Do we care? Is the goal of this district to teach to a test? If we want higher test scores, it needs to be a year-round focus, a dedication from our entire team. But if we see flaws in the DPI system and don't really care what our scores are, we need to communicate that to parents, teachers, taxpayers, and board members, so we're not wasting resources putting out fires once a year. I envision us as a district that prepares our students for life after us. I want kids to be more ready for however they define success when they leave than the first day they showed up. That success does not show on a standardized test score.
Mr. Schulze, you're next.
Thank you. As you heard in the opening, everyone likes to look at that DPI score. It's just a number. We've got a product 4.0 grade point average coming out of this district. We have things to be proud of and to celebrate. Couple things to keep in mind when we look at a score like that or we look at progress. That socioeconomic, that's anywhere from 45 to 55% of our student population. To look at a score is not the fair way to look at it. We need to look at progress. Ms. Brighamin, in, in one of our workshops, discussed the fact that we look at steady improvement in every one of our students. Every single student, every, or every single grade level of our students improved from fall to winter. That's something to be proud of as a district, and as our administrators are aware of that, our principals are aware of that, and our community needs to be aware of that. We need to look at progress, not a score.
Mrs. Leverich, you're next.
Progress is good, but the ultimate is the best and the highest. And we want to push our students to excel and to achieve higher. What I think is, there's too much focus on topics other than math and science and writing. We do need to focus on those, we do need to set higher expectations, and we also need to support the teachers and the principals so that they can achieve that. We need, we need the atmosphere of learning and, and students coming in with that purpose of to learn. I totally agree that there's growth, there's positiveness in growth, but that's only part of the equation. We have to get to the end point, high academic achievement.
Okay, this next question is for Ms. Maureen. How will you contribute to the school board and community working together to heal the divide that we've recently had during some board meetings?
It all kind of goes down to respect, respect for each other, respect for the public, and respect for our students. Because when we're acting out, then that's, that's example that we're setting to our children. So I also believe that we need to listen and listen to the constituents. And what I'm hearing by me is that we need to keep Cataract open. My daughter went to Cataract, I, I love the school. It's proven that the smaller schools and rural schools have, the teachers have the opportunity to modify and accommodate the children more often to theirs, to meet their needs. And there's also usually a higher teacher satisfaction, there's more of a community in, in a small school. It also enhances children's social and emotional skills and allows them to become better citizens. And children in small schools are usually poised to have better relationships down the line.
Next is Mrs. Lopez.
So as elected representatives, working with and for the community is a basic duty of the job. We need to be willing to listen, and we need to be willing to engage in conversations that may be uncomfortable and unpleasant. Listen first, respond later. We need to be able to say that we don't know an answer and to get back to the constituent. I think the community deserves more of a response for their time and effort than a two- or three-word reply. Specifically, this question deals with the divide that we've recently had in school board meetings. And honestly, Supreme Court Justice Bren, William Brenner, said in, in an opinion that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. For that reason, I believe that respect is very important, but we have to be willing to let the constituents have their say.
Next, Mr. Wells.
One of the key components to effective communication is active listening. And with that, that, that's the one way we can heal, heal our divide within our communities, listening to each other and, and understanding the ills that goes on. And even though not any single one of us as a board would ever go 100% with a single constituent or a single educator, student even, we need to look forward and understand that each one of those opinions, values, and beliefs are important, and that's how we will push our, and strive to make the best education for our students possible.
Mr. McKenna?
This is the root of why I'm here. I see so many opportunities that our district could support our community and the ways that our community could support the school district. But that sharing is about a culture of trust. Somehow, I feel that trust has been severed. And even though we all have common goals, we sometimes limit our abilities to be as successful as possible. Trust is built out of communication, disclosure, being willing to put all your cards on the table, good and bad, admitting when you made a mistake, reaching out and saying thank you. Instead, I see a culture of blame. Are we all individually accepting the role that we played in the failure of the Sparta School District?
Next, Mr. Schulze.
Thank you. For me, it comes outreach, transparency, and, and building trust with the community, right? I, every time anybody on this stage has reached out to me, anybody in the community, I respond with an email immediately, or I make a phone call, and we have that conversation because that conversation is what builds trust. It's what bridges that gap between us as a district and our greater community, and there's nothing more powerful than that. Completely open to everybody, when I found out I was going to be on the school board, I reached out to more than 60 people in the district, advisors, teachers, coaches, principals, because I wanted to be educated and I wanted to have that knowledge because it only makes us stronger, and that helps bridge that gap, right? So for me, that was, becoming a better school board member was to be informed and to communicate with others properly and appropriately, and to listen intelligently.
Next, Mrs. Leverich.
Listen, that's the first, that's the first part of being open and willing to listen to other people. Answering emails and phone calls. Some, some school board members have responded back to emails with, "Thank you for your email." That's not appropriate. That's just def, not appropriate. I would be willing to talk, I'm always open for debate, I'm always open for discussion. I would never take away public input at school board meetings, as has been done in the past. I would openly invite anyone to debate and bring up diverse ideas and I, concerns, because that's what will build you a better school board and better decisions. Lastly, I would want more public on our committees. Right now, most of the people on the, are school board, I mean, um, school employees.
Next, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you. I've had a lot of experience working with the school district, I have a lot of experience working with the community. And so I found the best way to bridge that divide is to actually have face-to-face conversations. Public input during the school board meetings, while extremely important and valued, is not very effective. While we say we want to listen, if, if people feel like, yeah, you might have listened, but you didn't do anything about it. And, and so I think it's much more effective to sit down as equals around a table and talk about issues, like we did when we developed the policy regarding COVID and masking. After all this time of having listening sessions, we finally got to sit down around a table and we found common ground. And I think it's through discussion, not just through input, that we can be effective that way.
Mrs. Lopez, this question goes to you. What are your thoughts on keeping Sparta Virtual Learning Academy open after the pandemic ends? How would you protect our most vulnerable students?
So as I understand, the SVLA currently is operating with about a $1.2 million cost paid for currently with ESER funds. The SVLA was created by the Sparta Area School District, according to my information, in hopes of retaining those students in our district who may have enrolled out to other online options. I think the SVLA is a value-added option, but as it's currently paid for by ESER funds, in order to continue it, it would need to find a way into the budget. As far as protecting vulnerable students, I'm hoping perhaps that as COVID concerns continue to decrease, the need for a fully online standalone Spartan option may also decrease to the point where it may be possible to educate those students with the one-to-one technology options we currently have in place. Thank you.
Mr. Wells, you're next.
Yeah, so the Sparta Virtual Learning Academy, I believe it has a unique use, especially after we have entered the, as we reached the end of the pandemic. As I see it, the, it would create another source of revenue, but also engage in more opportunities as students leave our district. I know we have a lot of military families that may or may not leave during the middle of the school year, and we can actually add a value-added option, have them continue with their coursework while, as they plan on moving or as they eventually move, and then enroll in their other school later. As for, as for protecting our most vulnerable students with that, I think that...
Mr. McKenna, you're next.
SVLA is a definition of a program born out of need. We saw our failures when we went virtual, we had to find a way to prevent that if we ever had to make that decision again, we were prepared. Now, as we finish year one of our partnership with the Wisconsin Education Network, we have opportunity, because we can offer our classes to students outside the district. But are we completely committed to it? Can we compete in a market that specializes in providing product that is solely focused on virtual? We need to decide where we stand as a district. Either commit the resources needed to push the program forward or get out. Sitting on the side of the pool with one toe in the water won't work, and the longer that we wait to make the decision, the more money we're going to spend that we can't recover.
Mr. Schulze, you're next.
SVLA, and one of the true gems that was actually created from the pandemic, one of the, one of the positives. We take a look at some of the students that have to learn virtually, our immune-compromised students, and other, other scenarios and situations where they've had to go virtual, just like Mr. McKenna had stated, out of need from the pandemic. These types of opportunities and programs, I mean, again, they, they help create another avenue for learning, and, and it's an avenue that needs to be embraced. And again, like Mr. McKenna said, we take a look at enrollment in, it, there's an opportunity there that we can continue to grow and build and strengthen SVLA in certain areas, and could help with that revenue stream, definitely. The other part is, it's utilizing ESER funds as of right now, we have time to figure out how to fix that into the budget and place it.
Mrs. Leverich, you're next.
I think the Virtual Academy is a wonderful addition that gives students another educational opportunity, and I think that's wonderful. As with any charter school, variety of charter schools that give students a lot of different opportunities, and Virtual Academy does that. However, with every charter school, as with everything, we must be financially viable. So right now, I know that the majority, as, so I was paying for the majority of the Virtual Academy, and once that is done, I would like to be able to see how we can work into the budget so that it can remain financially viable for our district.
Thank you. We've offered students the option to take virtual classes long before the pandemic. I understand that that was ramped up during the pandemic, and, and that was very important, and it helped students stay connected locally. But there are a lot of virtual learning opportunities for students that are offered at school districts around the state. As we look to reduce costs... As we look to reduce costs, I think that we could eliminate the Virtual Learning Academy without taking away the option for students to participate in virtual learning through other programs throughout the state. I hate to see those students go outside, but the reality of it is that we subcontract these classes, and, and they're not locally produced anyway. Thank you.
Mrs. Marine, you're next.
So, my viewpoint on this is that students learn differently, but you really have to be a very motivated student to learn virtually. I found that with both of my children, and I don't, my children didn't do as well in the Virtual Academy. I also think they're missing out on the social aspect of school. A lot of the things we learn in school is how to get along with people, how to listen, how to have respect. There's a lot of things that you're not getting when you are not at school. And talking about our most vulnerable students, I guess it depends on what kind of vulnerable you're looking at. If you look at, I personally think that counselors are an incredible part and an incredible asset to our school, and do help with the vulnerable students that we have. My husband's a school counselor up at Black River Falls, and has been a school counselor forever, and it's very important for us to support our counselors and not have them go the way of budget cuts.
This question is for Mr. Wells. What is your view of the role of charter schools in public education, and how would you ensure that our charter schools have equitable resources?
Each charter school provides a unique experience for the students that enroll within them. When I was in sixth grade, they were just testing the subject of STEM within the middle school, and I enjoyed it a bit, but that was just more of an intervention period, and, but we did learn a lot of unique aspects that really intrigued me, and students that are interested in certain subjects, interested in a certain style of learning, or even want to be excellent leaders, whatever it is that they need to be, the charter schools provide a unique experience compared to the standard of, of public education. As for funding and making sure those charter schools are well, are well-funded, we need to just focus on make sure each student gets appropriate funding in both the charter schools and public education.
Next up, Mr. McKenna.
Success in life is about opportunity. Right place, the right time, being willing to take a chance, try something slightly different than the crowd. Our charter schools present opportunities for our students, also highlight unique talents of our faculty. They create a diverse staff. They're some of the rooftops that garner the most pride in their accomplishments. Continuing to offer these unique opportunities is in all of our best interest. That's why I'm proud to say that my grandson is a Montessori student.
Next is Mr. Schulze.
Thank you. As a former president of the Montessori Governance Board and PTO, I am all for the charter schools. I, I think if they present that unique opportunity, when you take a look at all of our schools, whether it's Montessori, whether it's High Point, whether it's STEM, we have a waiting list for every single one of those schools, and it goes to show that that unique opportunity that, that, that opportunity, I guess is the best way to say it, it makes you stronger, it makes you better, it makes our district stronger and better as well.
Next is Mrs. Leverich.
I totally agree with everyone here who agrees that charter schools are great for our school district. It gives each individual student the educational opportunity to learn in a way that it's best for them to learn. All about giving students and families different educational opportunities that fit each person individually. Well, is entity and should be able to run independently and within their budget so they can provide whatever resources they need to be able to run their school the best for their kids, because it's all about learning.
Next is Mr. Hendricks.
I'm very proud of the opportunities that our families have because of the charter programs within our district. It goes a long way to help us to meet the unique and individual needs of students within our district. So I support them strongly. And as far as ensuring equitable resources, I think that the district, the business office does a very good job of advocating and allowing for spending based on the number of students. And then those charter programs do have the authority to allocate that money where they want to go.
Next up is Mrs. Marine.
Charter schools are pretty close to my heart. My first couple of years teaching, I taught in a charter school in Arizona, which are run very differently than the charter schools out here in Wisconsin. Charter schools in Arizona are independently funded. They're their own school, have to have their own business office, and, and do everything that the district does, but within themselves. So it's interesting that these charter schools are actually funded by the school district. I think that also provides us more opportunity, the children more opportunities, because there probably is a little better funding for the charter schools here. And it is true that your, your charter schools offer a different type of learning, and we all need to think about, you know, all students learn differently, and if we can meet their needs by them learning in a different way, but still learning, meeting the state standards, I think that's, that's perfect. But I also think that it keeps students enrolled in the Sparta School District, and, and instead of going out to a different district to meet their needs.
Next is Mrs. Lopez.
I believe with every other person on this board tonight that I am a fan of charter schools. They provide wonderful options for our students who learn in different ways, have different needs, or alternate goals. Looking at student achievement, some of our charter schools have the highest test scores and literacy and math rates. For providing equitable resources, it's a little concerning at this time, because the cost per student in our school in a school charter schools is not accurately reflected in the district's breakdown. And that's concerning, because it could skew the perception of the value of these schools one way or the other, if looking at them from a pure dollars and cents perspective. But that's probably not the best way to look at them anyway. It is important that these students continue to have these opportunities for alternative learning in the charter schools.
Mr. McKenna, this question is for you. A critical responsibility of the school board is to improve curriculum for the district and ensure teachers and students have what they need. How much input do you think parents should have in choosing curriculum or educational topics for public schools?
If we want our kids to compete on a world stage when they'll leave the Sparta Area Schools District, they have to be proficient math, English, and science. That's been our educational core, provides the base needed to be successful. But today's short labor market gives us a unique opportunity that I think we'd be remiss if we didn't take advantage of. We have an incredibly successful welding program. Using that program as a template and expanding it to offer plumbing, electrical, carpentry, HVAC, would provide us a way to fill labor gaps in our community very quickly, as well as giving our high school graduates a way to create a professional wage the day they step outside our doors.
Mr. Schulze, you're next.
Thank you. As far as curriculum, I, I take a look at the fact that we're in a public system here. The Wisconsin DPI provides the academic standards that describe what students should know and be able to do in the classroom. For us to go in and skew any type of curriculum would, I don't, I truly don't believe would be conducive to our public education environment.
Particular topic, here, I'll use yours. Any particular topic that there may be sensitive issues, I think parents should be alerted that they're going to be talked about, and parents should be given the option to opt out of any topic that not of the basic curriculum. If parents want it, they can opt their students in, especially the Youth Risk Behavior Survey.
Up next is Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you. I believe that curriculum, like sex education, like substance abuse, controversial literature, is all important within the school district. But parents have the right to know what is being taught, and they do have the right to withdraw their student from a topic. They also, I believe, have the right to ask for an alternative to a topic that they don't want their child to be involved in. As far as the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, the district has been involved with that for many years. It has provided a wealth of information about a wide variety of topics, and has helped to guide the district in areas such as mental health, but also in areas of substance abuse, premature sex, and many other topics, and it's been very valuable to see trends over the years for us.
Up next is Mrs. Marine.
As for teaching the sensitive topics, I agree with the fact that you should be able to opt out if you don't want your child to hear something. But I do also agree that when you're in a classroom, and the kids are asking questions, and you're having discussions, and it leads to a topic that your parents might think is, is touchy, it's a touchy topic. Are we asking our teachers to stop, stop teaching to that point, and send permission slips home to answer questions? I'm not sure. So, so I think there's a lot of confusion on the teacher's part, on, on where, where it stops, and when is, when is it, how does that affect your teaching style? As for, and, and like I said, kids ask questions, all kinds of questions. As for the behavior, Risk Behavior Survey, I do believe that mental health is, is truly important, and like I said, I, I support the, the counselors. And I've also seen that in budget cuts, counselors are one of the first things to go, and I would really hate to see that happen here.
Up next is Mrs. Lopez.
Well, I do not have a particular problem with the district teaching sensitive subjects. My issue is the way that the district informs the parents that this topic is coming about. They currently use a policy of implied consent or opt-out. If the student is there, the district assumes that the teacher has the parent's permission to teach on these subjects. But I believe that that policy needs to be changed, and it needs to be an opt-in. We know what's going to be taught, the syllabi are created. Give the parents a menu, let them select topics that they're, that they feel are appropriate for their children, and to opt, or completely say no to the topics that they disagree with. In terms of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, the school receives funds for taking, for having the students take that test, and I personally don't think the benefits of that test outweigh or are worth the risk to the child's innocence.
Up next is Mr. Wells.
Yeah, so, in terms of teaching sensitive topics, we cannot ignore learning experiences. Students, like we, like we have discussed up here before, they're very inquisitive people, and, you know, learning experiences are the main goal of our education, where we're trying to provide the highest quality education possible, and that includes life lessons, good morals and values, and other, and just other off-topic subjects that relate to our daily lives. We need to keep people informed and be able, so then they, so then they know exactly what they're getting into as they graduate from high school. As in terms of our, in terms of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, I think we, I think it's a monumental piece of, it's monumental in terms of that we could actually use that data to help our students.
Up next is Mr. McKenna.
Right place, right time. Every part of life, it's not just about how we learn things, but when. We don't teach third graders trigonometry. We wait until we establish the blocks of addition, subtraction, multiplication, algebra, geometry. Then, we teach trig. Kids need to learn, but involving parents in being selective about when we teach is our responsibility.
Mrs. Leverich, this question is for you. School safety continues to be a major concern across the state and country. Recently, there have been issued increased requests for citizen access to schools and classrooms. How do you believe these requests should be addressed, and how do you think this could be, this could affect school safety, teaching, and learning?
Let me just test this first. Is this working? Okay, all right. School safety, I think, is, I think our school system has addressed this quite recently. I mean, we have a lot of locked doors, you can't get in, you have to go through the, you have to be buzzed in, you have to go through the offices, and I think that our schools are taxpayer-funded, and they should be open to our citizens, they should be open to parents, they should be open to our seniors and community members. There's a wonderful learning opportunity when we invite other people in to the schools. I don't think that it will be, as a teacher myself, I would, I would invite any parent to come and sit in the back, to see what's going on, to learn what the kids are learning. I think it's important, and an open door to the citizens. So I think it's a great learning opportunity, and I don't think if, if used in, in a protective way, that it will not be a distraction to the student.
Mr. Hendrick, you're next.
Thank you. The district has invested considerable resources and time and thought into making sure that our school buildings are, are safe, but also that we keep the focus on teaching and learning. I guess I would not necessarily be opposed to a citizen coming in and observing a classroom if the teacher gave their consent, but I think it's disruptive for, to have members of the public going through the halls, just kind of peeking in classrooms to see what's going on. I don't think that does a good service for the students or the teachers. I, I think there needs to be a, a pretty compelling reason for members of the public to be coming in and observing.
Ms. Marine?
I totally support the school resource officers being in the school, because I think it's a prevention of them. We've seen in many of the school shootings that once the, the officer shows up, it stops, or they run away, or other things happen. I also think that teachers in between classes, especially in the high school, should be in the hallways, but they are oft, I, I think we also need to look at how much we expect our teachers to stop physical fights in the hallways, because I think some of them are just afraid of, of doing anything, because they're afraid of getting sued, or getting fired, or, or what else, whatever, so they, they don't know what to do, so the fights go on longer than maybe they should have. I'm not quite sure why just random citizens would have access to our schools. I really understand, you know, reading with the senior citizens and all of that. I would suggest, if you want to see the schools and you want to be a part of it, please become a substitute. Go through the background check and actually see what's going on in the school.
Ms. Lopez, you're next.
Being a student resource officer who engages in a positive way with the student, staff, and community helps to establish a safe environment and sets a tone of respect and authority. So I think we should continue to have SROs in our district, and perhaps even add to the number we have. In terms of having citizens in the classroom, Policy 609 gives the principal, the administrator, and the school board the authority to grant visitors authorization in the classrooms. As a potential school board member, I can think of no better way for the board to know how our decisions affect our, the decisions we make affect the district other than to be in the classroom. I think that having visitors and school board members specifically have a presence in the classroom is an important idea. Thank you.
Mr. Wells, you're next.
So, in terms of school safety, I've seen a great increase of safety provisions that have been made since I, since I started going to Sparta High School and to my finish, and to the finish, and that's just because of the... And that's just because of the, in terms of our general regard for safety as threats loom around about in the area. As for, excuse me, as for citizen access to be inside our schools, I do support it, but we do need our educators to, to understand and acknowledge when that happens. It can't just be surprise visits. Interrupting our classrooms ends up having a negative impact on what's going on at our, in our, in our students' education.
Mr. McKenna, you're next.
I also support limited access to the classrooms. I think part of the reason that the amount of requests has increased is because of the distrust. For some reason, people believe there's something going on in the classroom they want to see. As far as board access, I'd love it. I would love to spend time in a classroom. I haven't been there for 30 years and I'm pretty confident things are a little different now than when I was last there. If that requires background check, if it requires superintendent, principal, teacher, a combination of all to say that they've signed off before I would go in, I'm willing to do it. It would provide a perspective that I think would be unique and an opportunity that would give me to give back to the kids.
Mr. Scholzli, you're next.
Yeah, so as a current member of the Sparta School District Safety Committee and a current member of the Sparta School District Crisis Response Team, security is everything. The safety of our students and our staff is number one. There is no other priority above that, the safety. When we take a look at inviting or allowing citizen access into our, into our classrooms, into our schools, you need to remember a board member is a paid employee of the district. I've gone through the background check. Each board member will go through a background check. To invite citizens into that classroom, it can be a very slippery slope because when do you stop? If you're going to allow citizen access, you're going to allow citizen access, right? Or now it's limited. Well, what are the limitations? So on and so forth. So you're correct, the principal, superintendent, directors have say for the protection of our students, our staff and our district.
Next question is for Mr. Hendrickson. Have you received any donations from any outside organizations for your campaign and if so, which ones?
I haven't sought or received any monetary donations to support my campaign. However, an organization called Elect Educators Everywhere reached out to me and offered support. And they have committed to help with promoting some social media posts on my behalf. Also, the Democratic Party of Wisconsin reached out to me and I have accepted an offer that they will be doing some Get Out the Vote phone banking on my behalf.
Next up is Mrs. Marine.
I have not accepted or had any monetary, anybody give me any money or anything. I did have the Elect Educators Everywhere. I hadn't reached out to them. I will be on the Get Out the Vote mailers. I don't know if they're doing anything else. I just understood that that was part of the mailers. And I, other than that, no, I haven't had any.
Next up, Mrs. Lopez.
I have not requested any contributions. However, I have received from the Wisconsin Publican Party $218 as an in-kind donation for reaching out prior to the, to constituents prior to the primary. And I am expecting a $300 check from the Monroe County Republican Party to do with what I see fit, which I have purchased an ad in the paper.
Next up is Mr. Wells.
I haven't received any donations besides from just family and some close friends and just some people that wanted to reach out, but not any large organizations or just simple members of the community that were willing to support me.
Next up, Mr. McKenna.
I saw this topic on the forum, I was a little surprised, but in today's political climate, I guess it, I shouldn't have been. Serving on the school board isn't about politics, unfortunately getting elected is. To this point, cash donation and in-kind donation, I received a total of $1,518.40. Of that, I've spent $1,398.53. All of my contributions meet the Ethic Commission standards and I've received receipts for all the spending, which I'll retain for three years. My campaign finance report is filed with the clerk and if anybody would like a copy, it is there.
Next up, Mr. Scholzli.
So this is a nonpartisan election. I've had Elect Educators Everywhere, the Wisconsin Democratic Party, the Republican Party reach out and declined all because this is a nonpartisan election. All of the donations that I've received have been from family, friends, close members of the community. Almost every donation was less than $20. There were a few hundred dollar ones, thank you. But it's a nonpartisan election.
Next up is Mrs. Leveridge.
I have received donations from the Monroe County Republican Party, which I am a member of and I work with that organization a lot. And Republican Party of Wisconsin have given us, given me in-kind donation for text messages. And I believe that I spent that, those funds appropriately for this campaign.
Ms. Marine, this question is for you. What is the district's obligation to support the wellness of students who have backgrounds of trauma, who have, who are underserved and who are underrepresented?
Absolutely to think that we have an obligation to support these children who are, have trauma and that also includes having generational trauma that they've gone through. And the underserved and underrepresented, the teachers are on the front lines. They're the ones that are going to see what's going on with the children first and they're usually the ones that are going to alert the counselors, the psychologist, things like that. But we also have our special education resources that we really need to keep funded and keep active because that's who's really going to usually support these people. And, and special education has a role, it's close to my heart. And it's close to my heart, not just because I deal with it personally, but as close to my heart as a teacher.
Ms. Lopez, you're next.
The district has the same obligation to support all students. However, of course, those with trauma, who are underserved and underrepresented, need our support in different ways. It's very important that we reach out to them. As Mrs. Marine said, the teachers are perhaps sometimes the first to identify that. And we have, we have legal obligations to support them regardless of the budget. And I believe that we need to continue to do so.
Mr. Wells, you're next.
So yeah, not just that I mentioned that I had two brothers on the autism spectrum, on the autistic spectrum and that they, that our special needs program has greatly helped them grow and develop over time. But also recently, I've had a very close friend of mine commit suicide and he was a part of an underrepresented group. And even though this is a worst case scenario for many friends, parents and members of our community, I, we do need to focus on not just mental health, but also helping our students grow and develop, not just inside the classroom, but also outside the classroom. And having a complete understanding of this is how we can mold and shape the future of our community.
Mr. McKenna, you're next.
No Child Left Behind or the Every Student Succeeds Act. We have an obligation to ensure that every child, regardless of disadvantage, has equal opportunity. It goes beyond legal obligation though, it's moral obligation. We need to make sure that those that are disadvantaged have everything they need to have a successful life. While we do that, we have to keep in mind that all of our resources can't be focused on that group, however. It's about educating all. Students who aren't challenged tend to get bored. People get bored, fall behind. And all of a sudden, while we're focusing all of our energy on the challenged kids, our top becomes our middle. We need both. We need to challenge everyone, we need to encourage everyone to succeed.
Mr. Scholzli, you're next.
Thank you. One of our directors in this district uses this term all the time and it's all means all. Regardless of age, gender identity, ethnicity, each student deserves a right to a respectful, responsible and safe public education. It's our job as a district to see the ability in every student every day and to ensure that we continue to meet the needs of those children.
Mrs. Leveridge, you're next.
The district's obligation to support the wellness of our students who have backgrounds of trauma, underserved, underrepresented, is the same as the district's obligation to support the needs of all of the students in our population. We have all students and all students are under our responsibility to make sure that they get the education that they need in the way that they need it to be presented to them so that they can learn to the best of their abilities.
Mr. Hendricks, you're next.
Thank you. Unless we meet the physical, emotional and mental health needs of our students, learning just won't take place. And so that, that has to be a priority for us. We also need to understand that students with those additional needs require additional resources. We can't expect that we were going to spend the same amount of money on every student. There's a, we need to be equitable, not necessarily equal, in achieving the goal of meeting every student's needs. But it does take resources. And as we talk about things that take additional resources, whether it be the Gifted and Talented Program or meeting the needs, special needs of students, we need to keep in mind that the referendum is going to help to meet those needs.
So now it's time for closing statements. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to give a closing statement.
Ms. Marine, you're next, you're first.
Like I had previously said, I think our vision and our mission is to provide all students with the world-class education so that they have the necessary tools to become responsible citizens and contributing to our, not just our city of Sparta when they grow up, but also this great nation. And I do think that we, our kids deserve to learn how to critically think and evaluate and analyze information. And I know, I talked a little bit about it, but, but history is important and we really need to focus not just on all of the other standards, but there are standards in the sciences and there are standards in history and there's, there's art standards and, and you know, you really can't teach art if you don't have any money for a budget. So, and we probably need to look at, I didn't get to answer what I would cut if, if it was me, but I think we're going to, we're going to end up with higher teacher to student ratio, probably through attrition, hopefully. There's a lot of really good programs here that I would rather not see cut. So, and I also don't know that I agree with people being irresponsible when we're asking for operating referendum when there are 39 other districts in this April alone asking for an operating referendum.
Next up is Mrs. Lopez.
I believe the Sparta Area School District can be a premier district in our area. In order to achieve that, one step is having a diversified, a board with diversified skills, sets and experience. I may not be the ideas guy, that's Pat McKenna, or the person with the most common sense and straight speech, Jason Perry, or the person with the best handle on the budget and experience in the district, Marla Leveridge. But I do have an understanding of the importance of the written word, especially in regard to the policies that the board writes that drive our district and impact our children. I'm dedicated and devoted to the mission of making Sparta Area School District the best community of leaders and educators working toward helping our children become lifelong learners and productive members of our free society. I'm committed to advocating for the rights of teachers, the rights of parents and children and supporting and rewarding excellence among our educators and staff. I'm ready and willing to represent you. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Wells.
Never would have imagined, three years ago in that government class, that I'd be sitting here today. And we have to acknowledge that our educators not just shape our morals and values, but also inspire us as individuals of the community. And they, they deserve better. We need to focus on retaining these educators and giving them the support they need. Since I left the high school, there's only one English teacher that remains and only two science teachers that remain at that, at that school. And we do need to do better in assuring that we could keep them. As for, that's essentially my entire, my platform here and, and I want to, because they deserve better. And in turn, we, our classrooms are nothing without our educators. We could have the best classrooms possible and without that, without that teacher truly shaping the future members of our community, we would have nothing in our public education.
Next up is Mr. McKenna.
I've had the amazing opportunity for nearly 20 years to work for a company that went from being an underdog to being a market leader. I've seen firsthand the time, effort and dedication that it takes. I've watched and participated in meetings where multimillion dollar decisions are made. I've seen how a culture is bred and the effect it could have on an organization as it spreads. I have extensive training in sales and marketing that could be used to attract and retain our staff and students. I've been involved in staffing decisions and can tell you the only thing worse than hiring is firing. I've worked with leaders to make shifts in our model to stay ahead of the competition. I could sit here and go on and on and tell you about all these wonderful things I've done or I could do. None of it matters. This isn't about me. It's about us. It's all about a group being willing to give themselves for the good of others. Since announcing my candidacy and probably before, I've been investing hours daily to learn as much as I possibly can about us. If elected, that's not going to change. I'm committed, I'm determined to help us be better.
Mr. Solji, Solji, you're up next.
Real quick, thank you again to High Point, Ms. Presswood for putting this together. So in my experience as the former president of the Sparta Montessori Governance Board and PTO for four years, I learned the importance of working as a team to build a diverse system of learning processes and learning options so we can be competitive as a school district. I was able to see the commitment our, our Board of Education made to build up not only our traditional schools, but our charter schools like STEM, Montessori, High Point and Sales, to name a few. I want to continue this commitment to our teachers, support staff and administration so they can continue to educate at a high level for our students. As a newest board member, as I stated earlier, I wanted to understand how our district worked, what we needed to improve on and what we already were doing well. That's why that first week, I sent out those 60 emails to our district advisors, coaches and administration. In the emails, I received great information and constructive feedback that I could then share back with our administrative team to continue to strengthen all of our community programs, clubs and athletics. I also became a member of numerous school district committees, the COVID-19 ad hoc panel with Ms. Presswood, Sparta School District Safety Committee, Referendum Committee, the ESR three funding committees, the Crisis Response Team, and I even had the opportunity SRR3 Funding Committees, the Crisis Response Team, and I even had the opportunity to be a mock interview judge panel for our business students here at the high school. We as a district are in a good position to continue to make a difference. We have achievable goals. I will advocate for the children and the staff of this district. I will advocate for each sport and club that falls under this district's umbrella. I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to serve this amazing district and community.
Next up is Mrs. Leverich.
First off, thank you for the opportunity to speak out with our views of how we can move this district forward. I'm here because I'm here for the kids. With our bad test scores, falling enrollment, teachers leaving our district, families feeling disgruntled and leaving, we need a board who will listen to our community and ask the hard questions of our administration and not just vote in favor of everything that's laid out on the table before them. The current board, including two board... The temporary board members have voted in unison with the administration. They want the status quo because they had a special meeting to extend the superintendent's contract way before it expires and right before this election. They must be fine with how things are running in this district. I am not. We need to change in the environment and the atmosphere of our district and that starts from the goals and policies set out by the board and then supporting our teachers and principals and achieving those goals and holding the administration accountable. Then our test scores will rise and enrollment will increase. Teachers and families will want to come to Sparta as their educational choice. In order to make positive changes in this district, we need four people who would be willing to challenge the status quo and bring academic excellence back to Sparta. Please vote accordingly.
Next up is Mr. Hendricks.
I came to Sparta in 1998, uh, to be the principal at Lawrence Lawson. And over the course of the following five years, I had several positions and... And I became the superintendent of schools. That happened so quickly, not because I was anything special as an administrator. It happened because something else was going on during the same... That same time. Four like-minded individuals were elected to the school board, got the majority and proceeded to turn the district on its ear. And we lost many good administrators and teachers, but that provided opportunities for me to move up. There was enough chaos going on that at a certain point, the... The, uh, school district voters said enough. They recalled the board president. The majority was gone and we were able to re-establish, uh, a good working relationship, calm, and, uh, we progressed from there. I don't want to see that happen again. I think you should elect school board members who are independent, who are willing to work, uh, with the rest of the, uh, other six board members and not elect four board members who will have a majority and can effectively ignore the other three members and make their decisions and, uh, promote their agenda. You saw a clear difference tonight, particularly in the area of the referendum. Um, I'm hopeful that the referendum will pass and I... And I'm confident in the wisdom of, uh, the voters in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for your time and sharing your perspective with us and the
On behalf of High Point Charter School and the Sparta Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to thank you all for coming and, um, on behalf of our students as well, thank you so much. And thank you, candidates, so much for being here and sharing your perspectives with us. Have a great evening. Ellie, can you hit "go to Q04, enter"?
All right. You made it work. You were spot on. You made it work. You were spot on. We totally stole...